Good morning, everyone. We're going to call to order our Lander County Commissioners Meeting to the Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners for April 25th, 2019. First of all, welcome, everyone, and please remember to mute or silence or vibrate your cell phones for us. One thing I did want to do before we started was thank the Buick, they had a nice article as we celebrated National County Government Month, and they put a very nice article in for us. I said, "Our Commission takes a lot of pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health and welfare and safety of all of our citizens, and we thought that would elevate the awareness a little bit of some of the things the county does for you." So, we appreciate their support in that. Brian, may I ask you to help us with the political lesions and leave this off this meeting?
My pleasure. The lesions is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, if you'll all join us in a moment of silence, please. Lander County Commissioners may be ready for lunch from 12 noon to 1:15 p.m., and any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. So, we begin with our Commissioners' reports, and Commissioner Art, I'm going to ask you to start us off, if you have any reports or meetings or conferences.
Sure. I have a lot to talk about, but we'll cover that on our first item.
Okay. Anything that's on the agenda? Thank you. Commissioner Sparks?
Nothing to report.
Kathy?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, well, I do have a few items to share with you. First of all, on April 11th, we did have a full pack workshop here. It was actually entitled "Citizen to Leaders," and it was on government for elected officials. Actually, both of our Commissioners, Judy and Kathy, also attended on that one. On April 16th, we did have an insurance meeting, but we'll be going over that with all of you a little bit later on our agenda, of course, at some other time. April 17th, I met with the recently appointed GOED interim director. GOED is our Governor's Office on Economic Development, and Chris Sanchez was appointed as an interim, and he was kind of visiting the rural areas, and I had a chance to meet with him. It was very encouraging. He also was applying to be the director of one of many there that have been looking for some time, and it will be a little bit yet before they decide, but it was very encouraging on his attitude towards the rules and what might be coming up. The budget for the Governor's Economic Development is pretty much the same. There's been a few things moved around, but it's basically going to be about the same for the next couple of years, around $270,000, the GOED part. On April 18th, I did attend the Kingston Board Meeting. Kathy has reported before under the hospital board that they decided they didn't want to continue with the Kingston Clinic.
I haven't been to that. Hasn't been official.
No, but they've been thinking about it, and they are looking at trying to do their patients in another way and not really be involved in the clinic, and they're looking about a year out. So, some other things that the clinic is looking to see what might be able to be done if the hospital makes that final decision. Also, we have a new fire chief in Kingston, and Chance Ellis has stepped up, so that will be coming before us for ratification at some point. On April 19th, I did attend the Point Express Territory Meeting. For those of you familiar with our Tourism and Convention Board Travel Nevada, Nevada is divided into territories, and Lander County is one of the counties that happens to be divided into two territories. So, we have Highway 50 going east-west, which is Point Express Territory, and then Cowboy Territory, which is Highway 80, which includes Battle Mountain. So, the county is divided on that. So, we attend the Point Express Territory down in Austin in the southern area. We're looking at $217,000 that that territory has put in for grants from the Convention of Tourism already this year. That involves a lot of advertising from trade shows, brochures, radio, and there's even a new channel, Nine, and we're doing half-hour shows on that one, too. So, that's kind of exciting of what's going on there. On April 22nd, we did have the NNRDA, that's the Northern Nevada Regional Development Authority Meeting. They have a new website that's up and looking pretty sharp, so if you get a chance to check that out. And we approved a new inter-local cooperative agreement that will be coming out to all of us. We have a couple of new members that will be joining, and everyone has to sign, so it'll be a new agreement for that. And on the 27th of April, we've got our car show in Austin, so please come, and that's handles my reports. We'll go on to staff reports, conferences, and seminars attended.
Yesterday, or Tuesday, I received an email from the state regarding our NDF while-line fire protection contract, and I have a call in to find out. They quoted us an inaccurate number of about 208,000 and some change, and it actually, they said that it's actually 216,000 and change. So, I have to find out why, what happened, and then I'll probably have to bring it back before the Board at the next meeting for approval, and I can give you some insight into what happened on that. Last week, I met with Ryan McVillan of Cassidy and Associates to discuss the land bill. There are the lobbyists that are going to put forth the land bill for the county. They already, they've put together a pretty good plan. I got another email from them this morning that outlined the plan. We're going to set up some meetings with some state legislators to promote the lands bill for Lander County. We're doing our nurse interviews today, so hopefully we'll have a county health nurse selected this week, but we'll see. The training assistant safety position is in the paper, out to the public for anybody that wants to apply. We had a meeting last week related to our security cameras in the building, and we will be presenting in the near future our thoughts on what we ought to do for our security cameras that are not working properly in the building. We also had an insurance meeting last week. We looked at a couple of different plans, Providence, I believe it was Providence. That was the closest one to United. It had given us a 27% increase for our health benefits in the county, and United kept us at a 0% increase. So, we will be bringing that to the Board for discussion and actually see which way the Board wants to go. I know there's some unhappy people with United, so I would encourage them to come forward and give their complaints. It's very few in the county, but there are some issues with some of the employees, and that's it.
Thank you. Public comment. This is for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the Board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the direction of the Board. Discretion of the Board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the Board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment, something that's not on the agenda this morning? Okay, hearing none. We move forward to our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine, may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office or viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of April 25th, 2019 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of March 14th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of March 18th through 19th, 2019 Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes. Number four, approval of March 28th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of April 1st, 2019 Special Meeting Budget Workshop Minutes. Number six, approval of April 11th, 2019 Meeting Minutes. And number 17, approval of the payment of bills. Boy, you can tell we've had a lot of meetings recently. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of those minutes back to us to approve, so it looks like we have to pull number three, four, five, and six. Those are all meeting minutes, and I do have some discussion on number seven, which is the payment of bills. So, we're looking to approve of number one and number two.
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian made the motion. Judy did the second. Any other discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, we move on to number seven, which is approval of the payment of bills, and there's two checks that we need to pull out from that. One is for my travel, check number 207202, and then one is for Brian's.
Employer, payment to my employer.
Yeah, but your check is for, can I remember?
Oh, no, it's for, it's a payment me to my employer.
Oh, to your employer, okay. So, it's 202798. Okay, so if I could have a motion to approve all the bills without those two?
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Kathy seconded. Any other discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so my check is number 207202. If we can have a motion to approve that?
So moved. I'll second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion, and Judy seconded that, and now, any discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I will abstain, and that passes. The next one is 202798.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Kathy made the motion to approve. Judy seconded that. Any discussion, public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Brian abstains. Thank you. Moving on to our meeting. Commissioners, number one, discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove or amend Resolution 2019-03, wherein Lander County declares a support for the United States Constitution and the Nevada Constitution with emphasis on the Second Amendment right to bear arms and Fourth Amendment right of the people to be secure against unreasonable searches and seizures, an attestation that Lander County as a body fully supports the oath of office taken by its elected officials and adopts it as its own and all other matters properly related thereto.
Good morning. We're on over for the record, and I'm here this morning to ask the Commission to pass Resolution Number 2019-03. It's a resolution in support of the individual rights of Lander County citizens to keep and bear arms and protected by Section 11 of the Nevada Constitution and the Second and Fourth Amendments of the United States Constitution.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, Patsy.
Yes.
Do you really think this is about background checks? You're quoted in the paper as, you know, you have a little scenario there about background checks, buy a gun here, take it to Reno, kill two people. You really think this is about background checks?
I don't think this resolution is, but.
No, no. This whole situation.
Okay, well, yes, a lot of it is, absolutely, because that's the ballot that was on.
That's what you believe in. You believe that this is about background checks.
Do I believe what is? This resolution?
This whole situation with the state and constitution, state constitution and the federal constitution.
Not by itself, no. It's a lot more and a lot more serious, and I thought I made that fairly clean in a lot of my comments.
Serious in which way?
Serious in the fact that I think there's a lot of discussion to do away with the Second Amendment.
And you support that?
Absolutely not.
But you didn't want the resolution to come forward?
No, no, that's not true. I never once said that I was not in favor of the resolution. I only said there was no, there was no resolution before.
I want to fact-check this. Did Patsy try to stop this two times?
She wanted it taken off the first agenda because she felt it wasn't ready, it wasn't the time to take it forward. So, that's when I changed it from an action item to a discussion-only item. Then the second time when it went on, she approached me again, and she felt it wasn't the right time to bring it forward. Her concern, I can tell you what her concern is, or I can refer back to Patsy, but her concern was that if we brought it forward, like some of the other counties that have brought it forward, that we would be under attack from the governor. So, that was her concern.
We're under attack no matter what.
That's true, yeah.
Well, I know that the legislature can do a lot of things with the income that comes to rural counties, and I did want some more time, and I wanted to see the resolution before we did any action, but I never once stated I was against a resolution to support the Second Amendment or the Fourth Amendment, ever. I was simply giving you some other options and some other things to think about, that's all. And yes, we'll find out as it goes, and whoever makes this motion to move forward does have to read the whole resolution. It does the record.
I'd like to state on the record, I think this resolution is very well-written. It does exactly what we need to do without, like some of the other counties have gone with just the second. This one covers us.
I think that.
It enforces our.
The really significant part of this is Section 11, right to keep and bear arms, civil power supreme. And any, any attack on that is an attack on the people, and anybody that attacks this, if you're not against them, then you are with them.
So, I am going to make a motion to approve the resolution, but I have.
Just a second, Judy. Just a minute.
I'm sorry, Ted. Did you want to say something first?
I would suggest a small tweak to this, and I thought on Agenda Notice for this, for this item, we have an attestation, "Lander County as a body fully supports the oath of office taken by its elected officials and adopts it as its own." I think that's a very important part. It's not in, I neglected to put it in that "now therefore be it resolved," so I asked for a modification that states, "Be it further resolved that Lander County as a body fully supports the oath of office taken by its elected officials and adopts it as its own."
Okay, hold on, I'm making notes.
Ted, where were you just reading from, from the resolution?
I was just reading from my notice, which is my suggested amendment. Now, in the, Brian, in the body for the notice, I have that, but I don't have it in the world. But I'd like to, the county as a whole to adopt that portion of the oath of office is very important.
All right, so I will make a motion and read the resolution, but I just wanted to make a comment. I did check this morning on Assembly Bill 291, which is pretty much in retaliation of these counties' resolutions. It has been recommended to go to the Judiciary Committee yesterday, so basically that's where it's at now. We haven't gotten it signed, hopefully not. Also, AB 397, which deals with another retaliation against certain public officials because of the initial billing and the resolution, or bill, and the resolutions that have been coming out of the counties. That also went to the Judiciary Committee yesterday. So, they still have time, but hopefully through these different committees, they won't pass. So, with that said, I will make a resolution, make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-03 of the Board of Lander County Commissioners. A resolution in support of the individual right of Lander County citizens to keep and bear arms as protected by Section 11 of the Nevada Constitution and the Second and Fourth Amendments of the United States Constitution, whereas Section 11 of the Nevada Constitution states, "Section 11, right to keep and bear arms, civil power supreme." Number one, every citizen has the right to keep and bear arms for security and defense, for lawful hunting and recreational use, and for other lawful purposes. Number two, the military shall be subordinate to the civil power. No standing army shall be maintained by this state in time of peace, and in time of war, no appropriation for a standing army shall be for a longer time than two years. Whereas, the Second Amendment of the United States Bill of Rights states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of the free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Whereas, the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution, adopted in 1791 as part of the Bill of Rights, states, "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized." Whereas, elected officials take an oath of office which states, NRS 282.020, Form of Official Oath, "Members of the legislature and all officers, executive, judicial, and ministerial," shall, before they enter upon the duties of their respective offices, take and subscribe to the following oath. "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and that I will well and faithfully perform all the duties of the office of, on which I am to enter, if an oath, so help me God, if an affirmation, under the pains and penalties of perjury." Whereas, we, the Lander County Board of County Commissioners, have a duty to uphold the rights of residents of Lander County who are entitled to all the rights and protections of the Constitution of Nevada and the United States, and whereas, the citizens of Lander County derive personal and economic benefit from all safe forms of firearms, recreation, hunting, and shooting conducted within Lander County using all types of firearms allowable under the United States and Nevada constitutions. Now, therefore, whereas, Lander County as a body fully supports the oath of office taken by its elected officials and adopts it as its own, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lander County Board of County Commissioners does hereby go on record in full support of the constitutional rights of its citizens, including the Second and Fourth Amendments of the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 11 of the Nevada Constitution, and be it further resolved that the Lander County Board of Commissioners oppose the enactment of any legislation, state or federal, that would unconstitutionally infringe upon the lawful rights of residents to keep and bear arms, including the right of private individuals to lawfully sell or transfer their legally-owned firearms without undue government burden, passed and adopted this 25th day of April, 2019. I'll second.
Would you want to insert a modification?
She did it first. Good job, Commissioner.
Thank you. Judy made the motion, read the resolution in. Kathy seconded that. Any other discussion on the Board? Any public comment?
Right on.
Yes, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes the majority.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rock.
Now, Commissioners, Keith and I have discussed this, and when I make the small amendment, we could put it on some nice, real nice bond paper and have all the Commissioners sign it, and if you want a copy of the real nice one for your own house or wherever, that'll be available on your bond paper.
Can we also maybe have a copy of it posted somewhere in the courthouse?
Absolutely. That's why we thought we'd do that.
History and amazing. Yeah. I just hope that it helps, and I still believe that we have to do some more things, some other vehicles to do this. I don't think the resolution is going to do everything we want it to do, but we need to pursue this. It's terribly disturbing, the situation that the state legislature has put us in, and it's very saddening that we even have to think about something like this. But it isn't just the state, but it's the Second Amendment under the federal government. It scares me, too, so.
Well, we made our statement to the legislators, and.
And it is. Number two, discussion and possible action to approve or disapprove reducing the speed limit on 1800 East Street in Battle Mountain from 55 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour, and to post speed limit signs and all other matters properly related thereto.
So, we put this back on for Robin, who's here, and yesterday, in my meeting with the Department of Transportation regarding the ADA transition plan, we did discuss how we would do a traffic speed study, and the DOT representative recommended to me that we look into UNR, a student there that might be interested as a college project, to do a traffic study for us. So, with the approval of the Board, I'll make some phone calls. We'll look at having a speed study done in that area, and then come back to you with the results and see which way the Board wants to go.
So, I'm just curious, why, why would we need to do a speed study area, or, you know, do a speed study? Because this is a county road.
It's a county road. That's correct.
Robin, could you please come up?
I have a question, Robin's coming up, too. When we first looked at this, we asked that, even though we didn't change the speed limit, that we put out caution, children playing, children, you know, present, that type of thing. Were any of those caution signs put out?
I believe that they were, yes.
Did that help at all?
No. It doesn't help. Robin, you have to state your name.
Oh, Robin York for the record.
So.
What's happening is, like I said, they want the, they think that since it's not posted, that they can drive however fast they want.
I understand that.
We found out that there's exactly between all the residents and the daycare center out there that there are 20 children that go, that play in the area and go from the bus stop to and from the bus stop.
Do you have any idea how long the street is?
Well, I know it comes to a dead end.
I know.
But I don't know how long the street is.
Okay, so my other question is.
Probably five to six blocks.
I know it's not very long.
Yeah, it's not very long.
Is, did you, did you get any kind of sort of a petition amongst your?
He has it all.
Okay.
You have the signatures from everyone on that road that are still alive. People have died since then.
So, I guess my question is, is, you know, all we need to do is change the ordinance. We've gotten the, the signatures from, you know, a petition from the people living on the street. I don't really know as though we need to go to any kind of traffic study. Is, we've changed ordinances on roads before. Why can't we just go ahead and do an ordinance change?
If that's the direction that the Board wants to go, that's fine, but.
I mean, are they going to do a traffic study on every road that they're going to change in this county?
If they change the ordinance on every road, I would strongly suggest it.
Isn't it a legal thing, a legal requirement to do the traffic speed study?
We researched it yesterday, Commissioner, and most of the country, before they changed their.
their ordinances on traffic, particularly in county roads, do a, one of these studies. And Keith was happen, happened to be talking to the Department of Transportation.
So that's the first step legally?
Well, that's what our research concluded. It doesn't mean, you don't have to do it, you can make any policy you want. But what we're doing is changing the whole ordinance for one street, and it's not based on a study, it's based on one person's application.
It's not one, it's all of them.
Well, and I don't, I guess I don't quite understand that changing the whole ordinance, I mean, you just have to add a paragraph with the exception of, you know, certain roads, because it really is ridiculous to think about a road that is maybe a half a mile long, forty-five mile an hour speed zone. And we've got, we've gotten a study, basically, is it's not, you know, educationally bound or, you know, professionally done in so many ways, but they have the petition from the people that actually live on that street. And they had to do an ordinance to change the speed on Hilltop to make it forty-five, because all the, all the roads, unless you do the ordinance in Lander County, are fifty-five miles an hour. And it's totally ridiculous to think that you've got a half a mile road that you're allowing these people to go these speeds at. Couldn't we just add an exception into, you know, the existing ordinance?
You certainly could, but we don't know what the speeds, what they're going. We don't know, we don't have any qualified people at speed to determine what speed they're going. If you want to change policy and change the ordinance just based on what you have, you certainly can, if that's the question.
My question, you said there's a daycare out there? So wouldn't that, isn't there some, something that's around, like daycare schools that's set by statute?
Not under our statutes, because it's out there on the county road situation.
I would think, just the fact that there's a...
You can certainly, you can certainly put a provision on daycares that, that in front of daycares, they can only fifteen miles an hour, whatever. You can do whatever you want to do. I was just, we just thought we would research what most places in the United States do when they change a speed limit. And we just presented it to you, you don't have to follow it.
Well, and I understand that, and...
So that's all what I'm saying.
Yeah. No, I think...
I'll do whatever you ask.
So I have a question. So how long have we been beating this dead horse?
July twenty-seventh will be six years.
So if we were going to do the, as I'm sitting here rolling this around in my head, if we were going to do the speed study, or we were going to do all of these other things, I don't understand why this has been a process that takes this long on one road. I understand about the ordinance, but I think that you could easily put a subsection in for things that are less than a mile long, that nobody should be going forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour on a road that's less than a mile long.
And a dead end.
You know, that's, any of those things that, or near daycare, they have to be at this, that there can be a subsection, instead of having to go through all, jump through all of these hoops, we can fix this problem, that fix any problem in front of daycare, nobody should be going forty-five or fifty-five miles an hour in that type of residential area. And I'm sure when it was originally done, it was, there's probably hardly anyone out there, out there to begin with. So instead of having to go through, and when I heard about the study at first, I thought, well, now that wouldn't be a bad idea, until you're sitting here rolling around there, it's been a six-year process, that we're still going through these same things, where we can do an addendum or a subsection to the ordinance we already have. If a road is less than a half a mile long, then this should be what the speed limit is.
I'd be really interested in finding out how many people have gone over thirty-five miles an hour in a half mile road. I just, I mean, what, are they coming like drag racing down the road?
There's some of them that do that too, down the road, yes.
I'd like to see...
Not to mention any names, but there are some people down the end of the road.
Some hard facts, because I just can't imagine people racing to get up to speed on a road that's a half mile long and have to jam the brakes on.
Well, I know the new road out by, the road out that was paved out by us from one end to the other, they probably get about sixty-five miles an hour before they come to a stop and that, because it's fun out there, that's that new stretch, new paved, and they, they book until right to the... So...
It's an interesting, you know, this is...
Hi, Rita.
Rita, just for the record.
Rita.
I have one.
Sorry, I was talking.
I thought you was done, dear.
No, I just, I want to make a reference, and I know it's not, it's just an example, is Presidential has a section of thirty-five miles an hour on it. You know, this road is several miles long, and it does have speed zones down to thirty-five miles an hour. So I really, I think Kathy's got an excellent point, that maybe if we're looking at ordinances, and I really absolutely do believe that, you know, these roads are short and people are irresponsible, but you can still do a lot of damage in a half a mile. So I think Kathy's got a very good point, that maybe if we did decide to, you know, change the ordinances, we can incorporate all of, all of certain areas of the county, all of the roads that meet a certain criteria, because it's all for public safety. You don't need to be doing, you know, having a forty-five mile an hour speed zone on a half a mile road.
And it's not just vehicles, it's off-road vehicles that are going down that road that are, I mean, flat, butt flying. I mean, they're flying.
Okay, Rita, excuse me, we haven't opened up for public comment yet. We're still discussing...
This is on the same thing.
It's the same thing. I have that road that needs that speed limit on.
I know, but that's public comment. Robin brought it, just a minute, because we want to...
Have a seat, relax.
But we need to discuss first, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I stayed in Miami, if there's roads shorter than a mile, there's any reason that those limits should be that high.
I'm just gonna make a motion that we bring this back as an ordinance change. My direction, suggestion, would be any roads a half mile long or shorter that dead end have twenty-five mile an hour speed limits.
Any, any road?
We'd have to go through, county, county.
I would go road by road.
Or this road.
Do you understand how many different ordinance they are pertaining to this? You just have to point out which ordinance you want me to change.
I guess I was just...
You're not doing that right now, you're just saying, we want to change it, that's...
I was just, you know, kinda making this, because we do, I guess that the research behind this then would be we go out and look at those roads that are a half mile or less, that dead end, and that shouldn't be too difficult.
And then, and then look at the ordinances, and then bring specific ordinances in front of you that need to be changed, maybe.
Well, would it be, because our ordinance on our speed limits, there's really not a lot involved in it, is there? I mean, it's pretty, our old ordinances are pretty broad. So that one...
Well, there's, there's the countywide ordinance, that says all county roads are this, and all state roads are this, and all...
No, I understand that.
Okay, so you're gonna tell me what section you want this in.
I won't be specific to this road for now.
I think we could build it around the fact that there's...
I mean, I could research it and bring it in front of you, is what I'm saying.
Okay, what was that, Brian?
I said, I think we could attack it just around the fact that there's a daycare out there. That's my whole issue, that there's an actual place that houses children.
That's what I wanted, the children.
You know, it's just...
Would that be easier to fix it that way?
It's completely, it's one, it's, yes, it's a different direction.
Okay.
And it's, it would be apply, it would apply to all, all roads that a daycare is on. If that's how you want to do it. It's a lot easier than the other way, but the other way can be done.
We would just need a study of all the size of the roads, and in the meantime, we can do speed studies. Because that's gonna take a while to look at all the roads and determine which ones are which, and which need to be twenty-five or thirty-five.
If you're gonna change the roads, one road, you probably should find out if there's any other roads in the county that should be changed at the same time.
So how about, isn't that what we did a couple years ago? Oh, wasn't that our whole...
We didn't do anything.
Well, I know we didn't, but we didn't direct you to do it, that's why.
That's right.
The motion has to direct...
Do a study with...
And actually, it's, this specifically is reducing the speed limit on eighteen hundred So I have to word the motion around this. And we can bring it back later as an ordinance change to broaden it to...
Well, so this is the thing, it's like, we have, we have basically somebody that's coming to protest, and we don't have the whole county protesting. If we can build it around a daycare, build it around daycare, and then we're not putting all these restrictions on all these other places where it doesn't seem to be a problem currently. So I'd hate to put something, an ordinance change in, to where there's been no protest or no, other than this one, and we can address it from a childcare standpoint. That's my thought.
Who's a daycare out there?
Virginia and Georgia Wells.
Is that a identified business?
Yes, they are, they're licensed.
They have a business license?
Twenty-seven years.
Yep, I was gonna say, it's a long time.
And the kids are dropped off on the street and have to walk to the house, or...
They walk from her house and to the bus, and from the bus after school to the daycare center. So does the bus come off? In the winter time, she does pick them up and take them. Doesn't come off John Monroe, or... They stop right at the end of James Monroe. Or James Monroe, right there. So...
You know, if we just go with this, then I can say I want this, I want the speed limit lowered on my street to fifteen, the guy down the street can say I want to lower it to ten, and it doesn't stop if we don't go through the process. So there's processes put in place, and I would suggest that we follow the process. I know some people don't like processes, they want to just jump right in, they probably wind up in trouble along the way doing that, but...
And I agree, but I agree with process. However, this has been a six-year process that has gotten us nowhere, because we're still spinning our wheels in the same process, and I agree with process, I do not disagree with that, but we have to start somewhere and get something started, because it's been six years, this has been, the same problem brought up. So where is the jumping off point to start actually to fixing this problem?
So make a motion that we modify the ordinance regarding speed limits in Lander County to drop the speed limits on streets specifically serviced to servicing daycare centers to twenty-five miles an hour.
Can we add permitted in the county daycare centers?
Permit, okay.
There's some issue right now that that daycare is not permitted in the county. We'll be, I'm checking on it right now.
What do you mean not permitted?
It hasn't come for the business license or in special use permit, so we need to make sure that, as long as it's permitted, it doesn't, I don't have an issue with it.
All I know is, they were licensed, they've always been licensed, but I don't...
You've seen the license?
Well, no, I haven't seen the license, but we go through Carson City and everything, so...
So I think that, and I understand the licensing part, I understand that part, but we're also now, unfortunately, now we're getting aside that we're focusing on, which needs to be done, and I'm not disagreeing, we're focusing on the license and forgetting about the speed limit. So what, where do we start to do the whole proper thing right and get it done, as, so we're not sitting here four years from now talking about the same thing? So where is our jumping off point?
If it helps, I've had complaints from one or two other daycares in the county that they believe people drive by too fast. And I suggested to them that they approach the county commissioners and ask for restriction during school hours of daycare. That hasn't been done, but that was at the time, and even today is sitting here, I would think that would be the reasonable and responsible approach.
That was one of my questions, if we could actually to limit it to certain hours or something without, and then make, if we have to do the ordinance, can we make any, I guess I might want flexibility in there? So if something comes up, I mean, maybe it isn't daycare, but maybe there's just twenty children playing on that street, and everybody's going sixty-five, and all the residents want it reduced to something, that we would have the authority to look individually at a situation and change the speed limit.
If we do the daycare approach, we can certainly do that a lot easier, because no ordinance exists, we're gonna create it.
So I guess, so I guess I, as long as it makes sense to you, my motion is read. My only question is, okay, if someone says, say they live on Presidential Street, and they have a daycare, that's, that's gonna encompass the whole street. Okay, same thing with Hilltop, Milshue, whatever, if there's a daycare of someone living on those particular streets, I just made the motion to knock those down to twenty-five miles an hour. Would you prefer that you have a distance?
Well, I believe that I would, I would prefer to do the research to see what other cities and towns, the distance, and I'm pretty sure they have distances, and...
Because I'd say...
I'd like to look into that, Commissioner.
Okay, because I can say, you know, if you've got a quarter of a mile.
If you give me the discretion to do the research in your motion, it would...
And allow, and allow our district attorney to research a distance relative to the daycare facility in the street.
Is there any other protected institutions that you would like a reduced speed limit on, while we're doing the one?
Do, well, we don't really have any parks.
Oh, we got churches on Sundays, we've got...
Okay.
I don't know, I'm just tossing these out. If we're gonna create an ordinance on reduced speed limit in certain protected areas, because that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
We're protecting an area. So maybe the county commissioners, you as a body, would like to think about this, and see if you can come up with any...
I would just assume that this, we can leave it to your discretion, because we're gonna be discussing it when it comes back again.
I'll suggest it.
So we'll start with that. But I do have a question, in situations such as this, does our board have any authority at all to do an emergency reduction of speed?
Well, we probably could, but if there's not a sign up there.
Yeah, you probably could, you could certainly do that. It wouldn't, you could put a sign up there, but...
You're setting a precedent.
Since there's no ordinance, back it up, you wouldn't have any teeth, as they say. There's no teeth in that ordinance.
Right.
I don't know if you could prosecute people, pardon?
So if we, if we change it to twenty-five miles an hour, you're saying that our officers cannot enforce that?
Not until the ordinance is passed.
Not until we change the law.
So my other question?
Well, but the, but the speed limit sign would not say suggest twenty-five miles an hour.
They should stop them and give them a cautionary ticket, you know? They can do that, but if they want me to, and Mr. Forgeron, to prosecute it, we'd lose.
Okay, well, let's finish this one first, and then we'll talk about it in a bit.
I have a question. I don't know what the motion is.
All right, let's clarify the motion, that actually, is the discretion for our district attorney to look at this ordinance for protected areas, it will come back before us on the reduction of speed limits, is that correct?
And then how long do we want to look until we hear back?
Kathy?
I'd like to know how long the town will be gonna hear back with the preliminary ordinance.
I would like...
Kathy, I don't know.
Like my question?
As soon as I can.
How long is it gonna take to do all the ordinances? Because I'm, we're willing to wait if we have to, but not six more years.
No, the ordinance process typically is, is what? Two, four weeks, a month?
No, two months.
Two months?
Probably two months.
Okay.
Why are we looking at doing that?
Has there been a lot of protest from people in the county? Then why are we even looking at that?
Because Robin has been brought...
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying, I understand this, but I'm saying countywide.
We don't need to do a countywide one, I think, just this area right now.
Why are we messing and changing laws when there's been no protest on it, other than this, and this is a special case?
Because I think it actually makes sense, yes, because even though nobody's protested, you do have churches in rural areas.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, it's special, you know, special, so I don't...
Special, you know, special, so I don't think that's a bad idea.
Churches and daycares, I can't think of anything else.
Well, if you throw in a park, because who knows, you might.
In parks.
I think beyond that, I mean.
Can I make a comment?
Hospital.
Not yet.
Cause you're getting ready to pass something that's going against me.
Right. That's why I'm willing to do it.
So I, I did make the motion, if everybody understands it.
Any second?
No, cause I don't understand the whole motion, cause it's been broken up so many times, so I don't know.
Okay, the motion was that I, I requested Ted to, to look into. Other entities to be included, but specifically, we would like to change the speed limit to twenty-five on streets that have daycares. So basically, is we'll change the speed limit to streets with daycares to twenty-five miles an hour, and also give Ted the option to look into adding other public entities, whether.
Protected areas?
Protected areas, yeah.
Is that doable?
It's doable for me to submit something to the, your, your honorable board for your consideration.
Okay, all right, I've been.
So specifically, it is, it is dropping the speed limit on the street, but it, it is possibly adding a little bit more.
All right, I'll second.
Does it, no, the special interest, or the, you know, that's where Ted gets to look into.
Parks and hospitals and things like that, yes.
I'll try to keep it simple.
Please.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
A little bit for a public comment, thank you for waiting.
Okay, I'm one that I, I'm on the end of twenty-two thousand east, where the airport is, you know, twenty-two, uh, twenty-two hundred. Goes across little property, goes on down, crosses Hilltop, and then follows on out. But where my section is, where I'm at, I have the perfect road for speeding, drag racing, I guess I want to put it that way. In fact, there was almost a bad wreck last year when I'm out trimming trees, and I have an idiot just coming down my road, and I know it's his truck, and I had just moved out of the way when he'd come by, and he's texting. So he didn't even see me, well, I seen him, and I went down and I just flat told him, you come down this road again like that, and I'll make you roll out in that field, it's just that plain and simple. I've got animals, I've got kids out here, we've just got a new family that's just moved in, that's got two little kids, and, but it's the perfect drag racing strip, and we've had a lot of problems with it. Cause it dead ends, it used to go on past the airport, you know, but it dead ends, and they start down there and they come full board, perfect road to do that kind of stuff.
What's that road, what's that road number, now twenty-two hundred?
Twenty-two hundred E?
East?
See, twenty-two hundred is kind of funny of the way it's.
We're looking for a drag strip.
I thought you might. This, this young man, he, he does it now, but.
But, did he stop af, did he stop after you talked to him?
In a way, but see, he has friends that come out that do their thing, so, and he told me, he said, well, it's not posted. And I said, I'm just telling you right now, you better slow down, that's just how, I've been out there thirty years, and just cause you've moved out here, doesn't mean this gives you and your high school friends a chance to see this so fast it's on my road.
It may not be posted, but it's against the law to drag race, correct, on a county road, so, my point is, you could post it, and I don't know if the neighbors are gonna stop, because we have people on Milshue Road that drag race.
I bet you do, yeah.
You've seen what I'm saying, so it's just, I don't know if this is where they're gonna stop, because they're gonna do it anyway.
Yeah, I'm saying what I am because it almost caused.
Just a minute, we're getting a lot of over talk here.
Matter of fact, there's severe penalties for drinking.
Yeah, okay, so.
Okay. Question.
Okay.
Data what I need to say.
Okay, and for the record, that was Rita Rogers, when you first came up, you identified yourself, but we doubt you hold it, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay.
My name is Shirley Shepherd, I wasn't gonna comment, but being as you said, nobody protests, and she's the only one, I don't, we live on nineteen eighty-five Thomas Jefferson, which is a dead-end road. And I personally believe that going forty-five down that road, it's a residential area, people ride horses, there's a bus stop right there, I, I've never figured out why it's forty-five. When other places like out here at, is the states, is twenty-five, what's the difference between them and us, are they in, are they in city limits?
No.
Is that the difference?
Just how the ordinance was created, it's never been changed, I, I don't, I can't give you a reasonable, justifiable explanation, Court, if that's what you're asking me.
I tried, you guys were arguing.
Well, I.
Because I didn't create those ordinance.
I'm just trying to understand.
So, so it just doesn't make sense to me why you can go forty-five down my residential road, and you can only go twenty-five down that one, I mean.
And that's why speed standards are done.
Right? So, so if you want to protest, I'm protesting.
So, so. I think that's it, it's a very, very valid point, and, you know, my question for a lot of these here on the southwest side, I don't know if that's included in the ordinance, but I really would. Didn't seem to be getting any support, but I really would like to have this for dead-end streets. Is it's so much simpler to not just specify. Daycares or churches or parks, but, I mean, a dead-end street?
So what happens with a dead-end street when it becomes a flow-through street?
It should still be twenty-five.
If you're on a residential street, it should be twenty-five, any residential street. I mean, granted, sure, like it's the use presidential, that one is thirty-five, that's fine. Hilltop is forty-five, I know people have issues with that sometimes too, because, but I would like to amend my motion to also include any dead-end streets.
I think that when you start doing that, how long, well, this is crazy, so to do a, to do a study, a true study, how long is that looking at? Are we looking at a year, what are we looking at? To do a true study on the streets within Landau County, like out at Hilltop and all of those, to do a true study, how long is that, we're looking?
We don't, we don't know, but we, we could call the university, call the appropriate people and ask them that question and get back to you.
I've, I've, I've got a question for Ron. Ron, can you put one of your speed signs out there at Robin's house so that people can see how fast they're going and maybe slow down on the interim before, while we're working on this?
Yes, it's, we could put one out there, but keep in mind, even if the death, he's seen it, we can't, we can't.
Well, I, I understand that, now, do you record with that sign?
No.
No?
So unless you're sitting there watching it.
That would be a question for the.
Could you? We can find the culprits? But that would be my suggestion, that we put that sign out there in the interim, because it sounds like we're gonna be working on this for a little bit.
But that we truly, you know, come back every two months and see what the progress is, is that, you know, that we have gone, so we satisfy the community, that we could bring it back every, you know, couple of months, so they can see where we're at, so they don't think that it's just fallen, you know.
That's an excellent suggestion, you could also put in the paper, or ask the paper to publish, notice that, that any streets that any of our citizens are concerned with.
Yeah, I mean, then, then we would know, would that be something that's doable for you?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it gets done.
Yeah, so then I think if we do that, and we make a total, a community effort, we'll put it out there and say, if you want a case study done, this is what we're doing, please bring it in, because we're doing this case study between this and this.
That makes sense to do a full, a study abroad.
Because then we may be covering a lot.
Well, though, on one road, it's, it's.
No, but I think that we have to come back every so often, like every two months, and say, we've done these three streets, or we've done these four streets, so we can have about, so we can show the public that we're actually moving along on something.
Now, Robin, when Ron puts that speed sign out there, please, call Keith and let him know if it's working or not, or call Ron and let him know if it's working or not. Okay, cause we don't want kids in jeopardy, that's for sure.
That was the main thing, Art, is there's twenty of them out there.
I spent a lifetime taking care of kids, I'm not gonna stop.
My question is, on these studies, unless you have somebody on a street twenty-four seven, you can go ahead and put your, your car counters out, is, unless they're radaring everybody, what are they exactly studying? How many people drive up and down that street, it's not gonna record the speed of those people.
According, according to the research, we looked at it, it does.
Okay.
And, and I didn't think it did either, Judy.
But it does.
And it does.
Okay.
Well, if.
If you can find the right person to do it.
Well, that's where I think when we come back, you know, in the next month or so, saying, okay, we have this person in place that's going to do it, and this is the equipment they'll be using to do it, so we have, we're, you know, we're going forward with this. Because they, they do have the speed guns, and they do stand out there with them, and.
And I'm not gonna be speeding some, well, not that I speed that much anyway, but, hey, I don't. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, it has been amended, but the second never.
No, I wanna do a, I wanna do a true study of it, so can I?
One more second.
Okay, well, then you, okay, then the motion dies.
I'll try a motion.
Okay, then this, then the motion dies because it hasn't been seconded.
Let me try.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we request that the DA's office reviews the county ordinance on speed limits in outlying areas, and work on the ordinance, get back to us every two months, and in the meantime. While this process is going on, we'll run studies on streets in question.
Well.
Okay, you set just.
I, I would like to bring the information about the study and who does it to you, before we do that.
Before.
And I would like Keith and Bert to, to, to work with me on this, because they're the two that.
And I think also, as, as you mentioned, someone mentioned putting an ad in the paper for concerned citizens too.
Absolutely, I think that's a good idea.
So is that added on to his, is that added on to your motion?
What?
What he stated, is that, okay, then I'll second.
No, we're good, all I need is a second.
A second.
Okay. And let's get on this right away, Keith, on the, on the study end of it.
Any other discussion?
Kathy's.
Any other public comment? Thank you.
And be simple, without changing the rules, why don't you just put a speed bump in the middle of that, and sign on the inside of it, they're gonna slow down.
Because you know what, if we get an accident because of the speed bump.
If it's got a sign, posting it is there, it shouldn't be illegal, should it?
You know, punishing everybody for the actions of a few, it, it's just like anything else.
You don't have to put a big one, just put a little one in there.
It's not that it would be illegal, we live in a litigious society that everybody sues everybody for anything, and, and they would, they would sue us for negligence, for, for putting a foreseeable speed bump. That could cause an accident without any ordinance to back it up. So there would be some liability, particularly in our litigious society, but there's no illegality, it's just, it may be, maybe poor judgment, if something happens. If nothing happens, it's a great idea, yeah.
It would slow them down.
Yeah.
Undulation rode ahead, right.
I'm Carolyn Thomas, and that's my husband, the speed bumps, they have them in trailer cords.
It's private property.
That's private property, that's the difference.
You can put it into your gate.
Everybody's after the public agencies, I mean, you know, fall down the stairs or slip on the ice, you know, they all, that's just the reality anymore.
Well, we live in a cul-de-sac too, that's a dead end, I never see that it's gonna go any further, we have a problem with speeding them down that road, we just do.
They spinning brodies in the cul-de-sac?
There's a lot of people out at Hilltop that live at dead-end roads, I mean, I, I see it's gonna be a problem, but still, you know, people have kids out there, and.
It's not like back in the day where, it's not like back in the day where you could go to the kid's parents and say, and have to take care of them.
Recommend them for it.
Now you get in trouble if you point things out.
But I know in Utah, I guess it's private property, I don't know, but in Utah, residential areas, they have huge speed bumps, you have to slow down, and they're spaced pretty close together. And that seemed to work in Utah, but, you know, this is my bad, so.
There are some in Carson City too, I know, but it's not landed right. Okay, any other discussion, more public comment?
Hi, I'm Claire Hamilton, and I have what I hope is a reasonable question, why has it taken six years to even think about starting all of this stuff? Why wasn't it started then, instead of now?
It's a very reasonable.
These things he's talking about, why wasn't that started then?
You'd have to ask the commission from six years ago.
Yeah, that's a very reasonable question.
Asking why he didn't suggest.
Because I wasn't, I wasn't asked to do it. I, I was near, I wasn't here six years ago, neither was I.
Okay, yeah, so.
Patsy was.
When you, when you came on, why didn't you do something else?
Cause he might not have known nothing about it.
Because no one brought it to my attention, no one asked me.
Well, shame on him.
I, I'm giving you, it's a reasonable question, and I'm trying to give you a reasonable answer.
You are, you are, so, thank you.
Thanks, Claire.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. By our, the second by Kathy, any other discussion, public comment?
Just wanna thank.
Aye.
Hi.
Thank you, Susan.
Any opposed? Okay, we are gonna take a quick ten-minute break of this, and we'll be back in a few minutes, Austin. And Ted, I, I did have a question, and that was the one on, back on number three, whether there was any emergency thing that we had authority to do? If, if, could we put up a sign as an emergency to reduce a speed limit or anything temporarily?
You don't, I'd have to research it, but you could reopen number three and ask me to research it.
It's number two, or number two.
Number two.
And, and if you reopen it, ask me to, me and Keith to research it, and give Bert, Bert the authority, if, if we can find something that temporarily do, allow us to do it, you could do it in that way. So if it's possible, we'll do it.
Okay.
If it's not possible, we won't do it.
I'm gonna open, well, I haven't gone to number three, so isn't number two still open?
Technically, yeah.
Technically, we just did the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, is number two still open, how does the board feel about something like that?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
That's fine, Steve.
I'm good with it.
Okay, can we just direct you to look into any.
Yeah, you can just ask.
Emergency, um, speed limits that we might be.
Well, I think you have to take action, if, if, if it's possible, and you give Keith the, and Bert permission to do it, if it's legally possible, I think you have to take an action and say, if it's possible, I would like it to do it. Unless you want it to bring it back in front.
No, 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 you can bring it back to us, we're just directing you to look into it, see if we can.
So I would like to make a motion, then, that we request that our district attorney look into. The possibility of placing an emerg, of declaring an emergency on eighteen hundred east. Placing a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit sign in the interim while we. Research, or, or we do our, our study.
I, I would hope that, that you give me more options, because we may not be able to do.
Okay.
That.
So I guess we want the motion to just be general, to see if we have this authority to do any emergency speed limit signs, something like that?
Okay.
Yeah, that worked.
Do we have to make an amendment, or can we just give you direction?
Either way.
We just gave him direction.
You just ask him.
Just ask him directly.
I, I, I just, what Patsy said, I made that motion that Patsy just said.
Let's make an emotion, I'll second it.
Okay, all right, listen, sorry. Motion, Judy reiterated the motion. That Patsy made, I guess. Hey, Kathy, second it, this is getting confusing, any other discussion? Are we clear on that, though?
I'm clear.
Okay, and you'll bring it back before us?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Whoops, public comment? Sorry. Aye, thank you.
I could've said so moved, but I know that Wayne says he doesn't like that, but.
I, I know, that's, that's a tough one, okay. Moving on to number three. Discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove a parcel map for Jose and Bertha Leon. Discussion of possible action, let's see, oh, located at fifteen oh one Hilltop Road, APN zero one one dash three hundred dash zero eight, zone A two, splitting one parcel into four parcels, and all other matters properly related there too. Um, you do have some background information, and I love this, the item was noticed in April third edition of the Cattle Mountain Bugle.
I thought it was more interesting.
I love it.
Kind of right, directly, planning coordinator. This was heard, discussed, and approved in front of the planning commission on April tenth of two thousand nineteen. They are splitting his forty-one point one five zero acre parcel in four parcels, parcel A is five acres, parcel B, five point seven two acres, parcel C is ten point three four acres, and parcel D is twenty point one nine acres. There are approximately seventy-three existing septic systems in the area, with proposed and current division, that would put us at about ninety-nine if every parcel out there was developed. But right now, as I said, there's seventy-three existing, which keeps us below the density limit.
Did the planning commission, um, put any conditions on it, and all that they had to do?
The only condition was the taxes need to be paid, they've since been paid, and all the signatures are in there.
And the zoning rights are preserved?
Yes, he, he is zoned for this, he's zone A two, um, which let, allows him to come down to five acres.
I just worry about so many septics in one area, but we're gonna take care of that.
And he is not present, but his, uh, representation. If you have any questions.
Okay, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve a parcel map for Jose J. and Bertha Leon, located at fifteen oh one Hilltop Road, APN zero one one dash three hundred dash zero eight, zone A two, splitting one parcel into four parcels.
One second.
And authorize the minor.
And authorize the chairman to sign the minor.
Second that.
Thank you, Judy made the motion, Brian seconded, any other discussion? Any public comment?
These are five acre parcels, right, Rita Rogers, out in Hilltop, that is being divided up?
Absolutely.
No less than five acres.
No less.
No less.
One is five, five point seven, and ten point three.
We passed some that wanted to come out there and change all of that, so.
And twenty, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, any opposed? Thank you. I'm gonna sign this afterwards, if that's okay with you. Number four, court discussion for possible action to approve or disapprove the interlocal contract between the state of Nevada acting by and through the Secretary of State and Lander County regarding the Center for Internet Security and Incorporated Services, to authorize the chair to sign, and all other matters properly related there too.
Not, I don't know where, say he is. And did you review this one?
Yes, I have reviewed this, and, and it, it, it meets all the technical requirements. This is, uh, Gina's not here either. This is one we, we, we go through all, all the time, so.
This is a renewal.
Yeah, it's a renewal, I've, I've reviewed it, everything's fine.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the interlocal contract between the state of Nevada acting by and through the Secretary of State and Lander County regarding the Center for Internet Security and Incorporated Services, and authorize the chair to sign.
One second.
Thank you, Judy made the motion for approval, Kathy seconded, any other discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that passes. Number five, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove a request by Lander County General Improvement District number one to place antennas on the Battle Mountain water tank to maintain television service for the Battle Mountain area, and all other matters properly related there too.
My name is Earl Casora, I'm the chairman of Lander County General Improvement District number one.
Excuse me, Earl. Perhaps if you opened up six two simultaneously, uh, we won't have to go back and forth, because he, he may be talking.
Sliding into number six, happy to. Informational presentation by the Lander County General Improvement District number one, Battle Mountain TV Board, and all of the matters properly related there too. So five and six are open, go ahead, Earl.
I was just gonna suggest that. Well, as far as number six, I think, um, I was asked to come, the board wanted to ask some questions about what the, uh, TV board does. Would you like me to just, you have questions, or would you like me to just explain a little bit about what we do?
Just in general, that's fine, please do, go ahead.
Okay, um, well, the official name is not the TV board, but that's what we do, it's the Lander County General Improvement District number one. And we're responsible for over-the-air transmissions of TV and radio stations, um, for Battle Mountain, only for the northern part of the county, not for Austin, that's separate. So we have, uh, sites that we use on the mountain tops to transmit the, uh, signals which we get from Reno and Salt Lake City, uh, through equipment that's sometimes owned by other districts in other counties. So it hops along and, and makes its way to us. So as far as number six goes, that's what we do. We, um, get our funding from, uh, a small, a, a special assessment that's on people's property tax bills. And, uh, that's, that's how we fund it. I don't know if there's any questions, or that, that pretty much explains what we do.
Yeah, how many, uh, residents in the northern part of the county don't have cable or dish? How may really facilitate the use of the TV antennas?
Okay, that's a really good question, and one that I don't have any real way to determine, other than just word of mouth. A lot of people are, are getting, um, uh, dish network or cable. And I'm trying to put the word out, because I think a lot of people don't even know that they can get just about twenty channels over the air TV for free. So, um, but, uh, I really don't know how to exactly answer your question, I don't know the number.
And when this equipment breaks, um, breaks down because of weather, winds, and things like that, how do, how were you guys able to replace it, to bring the service back for people?
Uh, we, um, well, uh, we had a technician onboard for quite a few years, but, um, he retired. And, uh, I have a degree in electrical engineering, so I've been volunteering to do a lot of the repairs with Bart Negro. And we've been keeping it up and running that way so far. Uh, but we also have a technician, uh, named Tommy Guo, who's out of Reno, that if we need some extra assistance, we can contract him to do it. Sometimes when the TV and radio goes down, uh, it's not due to our equipment, but, uh, due to equipment that we don't own, it's bringing it from Reno to us. So, uh, in those cases, we don't get any control over it.
And where are your antennas, antennas now, please to have?
We have our transmitter sites, um, the radio is transmitted from Mulawee, and the, uh, TV is transmitted from our, our Genta Rim, about twenty miles east of, of Battle Mountain.
Now, these the antennas that you're wanting to put on the water tower, or these different?
So some changes are being made, um, as far as, uh, Humboldt and Elko County, as far as how they get the signals, and we're gonna have to make some changes as a, as a result, because the microwave link we're using, they're gonna decommission that. In any case, we're, uh, we're exploring some methods, uh, to keep the TV going. And one would be, um, uh, to use a company called White Cloud Networks Nevada, and they are providing Elko with their TV signals, and also providing Elko with wireless, um, internet service by subscription to the public, it's what's called fixed wireless, it's, people subscribe to it, and, and a piece of equipment goes at their home, and it comes to them wirelessly, because they have internet in their home. Uh, so they're doing this in Elko, and they'd like to be able to do it here by putting equipment on our water tower. Um, and it would do two things, it would provide another option for the community to, uh, get high-speed internet, which would be, well, they offer quite high speeds, so it would be faster than you could get by the phone company. And secondly, um, we would like to get internet up at our Genta Peak, and that would allow us, through them, to bring the internet up there to get the TV signals up, so we would have a, a way to, uh, get the signals from Reno and Salt Lake City by the fiber, rather than, uh, we were doing it, which isn't coming to work because of the microwave.
Earl, I, I was gonna ask you what the range for the internet would be. So I know if you can, and can reach it on the rim, that's a considerable range.
Okay, um, what, what they wanna do is transmit the internet from the, um, water tower, and I was told by, uh, Dave Skinner at, at White Cloud Networks, that they would expect a range of ten miles from the water tower, a radius, ten miles, so that would include Hilltop, I guess. Yeah, a lot of people who don't have, I think that's what their target is, people who don't have access to, uh, AT&T users.
And is this, is the internet themsel, itself would be free? You just have to purchase the equipment?
No, no, they want to do, they wanna do a subscription service to, as a matter of fact, I can show you, this is their, I think it would be the same range, but would you like to see this?
No, just, what's the lowest range?
It's a, it's a fee-based service, and they have, uh, different speeds from thirty-four ninety-five a month, all the way up to seventy-four ninety-five a month, and then even if you need more, they'll talk to you about that, so. But it would give us the opportunity to get internet through them, so that we could then beam the TV stations from, uh, the water tower to Argenta Rim, and then transmit that over the air to the, the public.
So what channels do you have on your, you said you have twenty channels, you have ABC, NBC?
Okay, uh, there's channels and sub-channels. So, uh, the channels, there are seven channels, and those have sub-channels. We have ABC, NBC, CBS, uh, Fox, PBS, um, CW, and Nevada Sports Network. And those have sub-channels, like Antenna TV, New TV, um, uh, I forgot the names of some of them, but, um, like PBS has, PBS, and then they have something called V eight, and they have PBS Kids. So the, each of those seven channels has sub-channels on it. So altogether, you've got about twenty programs you can watch over the air.
As long as you have General Hospital, that's all that matters.
I'm not sure what network.
How are you doing financially? How's your bank account?
Uh, we're doing okay.
You're doing okay?
We're doing okay, we, um, we receive from taxpayers only about, uh, fifty thousand dollars a year.
And, and what's your outlay?
It varies, um, and if we, we're looking at some new equipment now, to, um, one thing I'd like to do personally is to, um, set up equipment so that people can receive the channels more easily without an outdoor antenna, and I think that would allow a lot more people to take advantage of it, but that's gonna need some new equipment. But, um, so far, we've been spending less than we're taking in. We, you know, we have expenses like our audit, and we have a secretary, and we have, of course, our board members, but we're spending less than we're taking in, and I think we're doing pretty good, we're only taking in fifty thousand dollars per year.
Earl, aren't there some, some other, um, businesses that also do that type of thing? Have you looked into, because, uh, any other options other than just that one company?
This company is doing a service for Elko, so they, they're, they're not just providing internet service, but they're, um, bringing the channels in from Reno and Salt Lake City. To answer your question, um, there is another company that, uh, um, that Humboldt County is using, I forgot the name of it now, Sky Networks or something like that. But, uh, Dale Ross, I don't know how to say his name, who does work for, uh, Elko County told me their quote was much higher.
I, I guess I, I just wanna make sure that, that you knew who all was out there doing that type of thing before you just decided on one. Um, cause there's been a, a lot of folks in other counties, and, and even Austin, when they came in and said, we'll give you this, and all, but we get all your internet service too, and we didn't have enough people that actually subscribed. And so all of a sudden, all the promises that we were given weren't there at all, so, and it's happened in several other counties, especially with broadband.
You're saying that they tried to do it, and there weren't enough subscribers?
I'm saying it didn't work, and, yeah, right.
And that, that may happen.
Yeah, right, so I, I just wanted you to do some more research on, on that, of course, but the other concern I had was actually the water, the water tank, and what kind of devices you, you wanna put on? And is there any other options for something that's that high that we might be able to use in lieu of the water tank?
Uh, I don't know of anything that's that high in the area, but, um, you could certainly consider if there is something that's about, I think, a hundred eighty feet high, um, the water tower.
How big is the antenna, how tall?
Uh, the antennas they wanna put on for the internet are, um, let's see, they're only, um, like, twenty-nine inches tall by ten inches wide by two inches deep. And, um, there'll be a little amplifier that sits behind it, and he says the maximum weight with everything for each one would be fifty pounds, and they would put four on the, on the tower, one on each leg probably, or at the top of each leg. So they're not that big. Um, as far as our antennas for the TV and radio, that I'm not sure right now, because it, it would involve quite a bit of, um, quite an involved study to find out exactly what it is, and I wanted to know whether the county would consider allowing us to do it before we go to the effort to, you know, many man-hours of, uh, evaluating exactly how to do it. We did do a preliminary study that said that we could, um, cover most of the, uh, population from the water tower, at the height the water tower is, but it was just very preliminary. So, uh, as far as those antennas, I'm not really sure.
So you wanna put it up on the big tower by the hospital, behind Maverick?
Yes, and the hospital is, um, I've been told, um, the center for where internet is received to the area. I guess they get the big link there, so, um, that would work good, since that's so close to the water tower.
Robert, is this gonna help us with internet issues?
Uh, Robert, quick, for the sheriff's office, I don't know if it'll help with the internet issues. Uh, we currently have a provider in town for PC internet that provides the same type of wireless service to the community. Um, however, we have public safety radio equipment on that tower. So if the board chooses to go forward, I just would ask that it's coordinated with us, so it doesn't interfere with our public safety.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, it can't interfere with the sheriff's office.
Certainly.
Well, I definitely don't see a problem with, with putting antennas up as long as, like Robert had mentioned, it didn't interfere with the sheriff's office.
Do we have any legal issues with this, Ted? Putting it up on the water tower?
No, not, not with the, the county commissioner's permission, uh, we don't.
Not legally, just aesthetically?
Right, just, yeah.
Well, we already have other big signs up, so. I'll make a motion, and we approve a request by the Lander County General Improvement District number one to place antennas on the Battle Mountain water tank, providing they do not interfere with the.
And to allow White Cloud Networks to, uh, do the same. And to allow White Cloud Networks to do the same sort of.
Commissioner, I think, I think, and I would, I would respectfully ask for her to that you include in your motion an agreement between, since they're a separate legal entity, an agreement between county, a written agreement between county and, and their district.
And, and, yes, and so approve, approve the antennas on the water tank with a written agreement between Lander County and the General Improvement District Number One. Earl, I can't, I can't include the internet. It's not in the agenda as written.
Okay, let's see here.
Basically, the agenda is only specifically for maintaining television service.
Well, we might have to do that the next meeting then. I'll second your motion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like, I would like Earl to come, you know, like every four or five months and just give us an update on what's going on. That's not a problem, I mean.
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Any public comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Earl.
All right, thank you.
And you're gonna do a little bit more information on maybe the background and some history and maybe even call some other counties that might have had this for some time before you make a decision.
Right, yeah, Elko, as I say, they're doing it for Elko and the fellow from the company may be able to come to the next meeting.
Well, but Elko has made some mistakes too and I don't know how long maybe we would Elko, so I'm saying, maybe, we're asking you to vet it a little bit, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, President.
Okay, number seven, discussion and possible action regarding provided services and membership of the Nevada Association of Counties, NACO, and all of the matters properly related there too. And we do have someone that was asked to be on the line.
Yes, I'm gonna do this here.
Okay. So we'll wait just a minute.
So Austin, I'm gonna tie in another person, okay? So if I lose you, I apologize.
Did everybody get that?
Yeah.
Information, and it was faxed to Austin or email.
If you need to reach me on my cell phone, it's four one two 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 five nine eight nine five. Otherwise, leave a message. Thanks, bye.
Austin, you still with us?
Nope. I'll start over. Is that the chair?
Oh, yeah. What did you say?
Hello?
Yeah, sorry, we're back with this here.
Okay.
The Mars.
Okay.
Okay. Only trying.
Okay, first of all, let me tell you the information that I put in was just kind of updated information on what our Nevada NACO has been doing this year and most of them were just general bills that they've been testifying on or all things relating to the Nevada legislature. So I'm not going into that part at all, but I do wanna give you some background on it because that's what you asked for. First of all, according to NRS two four 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 one two oh, that's our county government statute, and they do allow or authorize membership into the associations and that's where we get our authorization. The, the objective of NACO is, the core belief of the association is that counties, being general purpose government entities encompassing both unincorporated and incorporated areas and thereby providing services to all people within the state, should exercise initiative and leadership and assume responsibility in dealing with problems and needs requiring our attention and action on a statewide basis. The mission statement for the Nevada Association of Counties shall be to encourage county government to provide services that will maximize efficiency and foster public trust in county government. Now, all of the counties in Nevada, all seventeen, do have their representatives on NACO. Along with that, we also have affiliate members which sit on the NACO board and that is the different associations. Let me read them to you because they are valuable members and many of them attend monthly with us. The Association of County Treasurers of Nevada, County Fiscal Officers Association, Nevada Assessors Association, Nevada Association of County Clerks and Election Officials, Nevada Association of County Human Services Administrators, Nevada District Attorneys Association, Nevada Judges Association, Nevada Sheriffs and Chiefs Association, and Recorders and Association of Nevada. The purposes of the association include, but are not limited to, enhance the working relationships within county government, to strengthen the communication with federal, state, and private organizations, to identify and solve common problems, to promote effective and efficient government, to provide a forum for determining the long-range goals for county government, to provide training and educational programs for local government officials and other members of the private and public sector, to provide ways and means whereby elected and appointed county officials may interchange information, ideas, and experiences to obtain expert advice, to provide the legislature and other units of government and the public with necessary information about county government and the means by which it may be improved. And that basically are the main points of our bylaws in the membership. We are engaged in all aspects of national and state issues, uncommon policy issues. The national also gives us full overviews and full analysis of draft legislation and they give us information to give our input. They often will do a model resolution or a letter for us that we can tack onto for our information. Our priorities are to present, to prevent unfunded mandates to the county and cost shifts to the county and to maintain and ensure county input and governments. And that's where we actually, what, a few years ago, we did the enhancement of the home rule that we set out because basically the states are the ones that tell the counties what they can do with so many areas. So with the home rule, we got to exercise things that we could make decisions on where ordinarily we would have to take it to the state legislature. So they gave us a little bit more flexibility in that. So that's my basic background. We have belonged to NACO for over seventy years, as far as Lander County. I don't know whether they have any other records that go back a little bit further because NACO was much older than that, but that's as far as I could, I could do my history on it.
Yeah. So I'll say, I mean, I, I'm the one that asked for it to be placed on the agenda, the reason, and all states' reason why, was first off was their neutral stance they took on the Second Amendment. So it got me thinking, it's like, how can we belong to an organization where every, every county, the same counties belong to it and then the north and south are so split on a lot of issues that we have? I don't, I don't see how that can work, you know, that we, that we pay into that. It's, so it's, it's kind of a mixed message that I'm getting. It's like, are they really doing us a benefit for what we pay? You know, that's, and that's why I asked for it to be on, for, to discuss that, to maybe that there, there could be some clarity for me to where I feel better about NACO and how they represent our taxpayers in Lander County. So that's why I asked.
I would, I would share your concerns, but I would add that all the rural counties that are against what's going on at the state legislature, when I talk to Patsy and I ask her to do something through position in NACO, I get, "There's Democrats in NACO." That's what you told me. Yeah. I don't forget, Patsy. I mean, we've got some real constitutional issues and NACO's not doing anything statewide or federally. Because there's Democrats.
Again, we have, NACO takes a position on what we call common policy issues that we all agree on. NACO, at our board meetings, do not always agree on how we wanna go forward on different situations and different issues. Yes, it's true, we have Washoe, we have Clark County, and very often, they're different on some issues, but there's so many that we are all common core on in the federal government and in the state government that we can't represent and take a, a NACO issue. On those things, those are the ones that we testify on.
Well, if you take, like, the really hot, in my, in my opinion, the very hot issue of the Second Amendment, it's like how convenient for them, you know, like the South, you know, Clark and Washoe, that we take a neutral stance and it's like we have no voice as, as our, you know, our smaller Nevada rural counties is, and it's like, I just, again, that's, that's my whole confusion on this.
No, and I understand that, but unfortunately, there are still some rural counties who also have taken the position not to do a resolution and their information is important too because every member that sits on NACO and votes, votes for that county and they have to know how their, their commission stands on that issue.
What counties are not joining in on the Second Amendment in Nevada besides Clark and Washoe?
I don't, I don't know all of them that have. I only knew five of them that actually had taken a position. I do know some of them have not taken a position yet. Whether they will or they won't, I'm not sure.
'Cause I have a feeling if we had voting members for each county that we would overwhelm and be in favor of the Second Amendment. That's what I'm saying, how convenient that is for Clark and Washoe.
Yeah, very convenient.
That's what I'm saying, it's just kind of a mixed signal to me and it's just.
And, and I, I would hope, you know, I've, I've belonged to associations mainly because of political power, insurance, things like that. And I, I just, I, I don't see NACO doing a darn thing for us in this constitutional crisis time.
Now, let me, let me say that, and I'm speaking on a state level, I can see how possibly they represent us in some issues federally in Washington DC, so I'm a little bit torn on that for that aspect, you know, because the thing is if we don't have them lobbying us for us, then we're going to have to be paying for lobbyists to represent our county and I hate to think of what the expense would be for that.
So yesterday I got a call from Senator Gocicia and we had quite a conversation and one of the questions came up was how do they, and I spoke to Jeff Fontaine, who's a former director as well, and this whole idea of not representing everybody, especially on the Second Amendment. And as far as not being able to, to take in a neutral ground, they say what happens on this, with this organization, and I've sit on some other boards to do the same thing. If you don't take a neutral ground, it totally destroys the infrastructure of the whole organization. That's, and right or wrong, if you have this and you have seventeen counties and you don't, and you have three that are this way and the, you know, fifteen or fourteen are this way and you have, they have to take a neutral or the whole organization itself crumbles because you, then everybody starts, starts to drop, well, let me finish and then you can go, 'cause I don't wanna lose my concentration. So then the organization goes, so when Senator Gocicia called, he said, "You guys have to understand the amount of money that you would be paying in for lobbyists to support you guys that NACO already does for you." He said, "You have to take that into account." He said, "Because the twenty-one thousand three hundred that we're paying in annually now, you could quadruple that for big, big things that have to do with, you, you would need as far as paying a lobbyist themselves to go in and fight those things." And the other thing that NACO does that Mr. Fontaine said is right now they're lobbying for the diesel tax for us, that, so counties can actually get, get a diesel tax where we're not getting that now. We get the fuel tax, but we don't get the diesel tax and NACO is the one who actually wrote that bill for us so we could start getting, if passed, we can start getting that tax. He said, "You deserve it with all the mines and everything else. There's a lot of money in that, that diesel tax." He also said that NACO had written a bill for the county commissioners when they have empty boards that as of now, you guys can't, we can't point on certain things where they're trying to get the clarity so we can vote, 'cause there's a lot of people who won't fill positions, where we can actually, we can place people in these positions where you can't get them filled. And he said that they do do bills to support the counties and they said they assist in the drafting of the bills for the rules and they maintained, like I said, they maintained the neutral unfortunately for the fracturing of it. And I just got a text on my phone from DeMar Doll and I'm not quite sure who that is.
He's the commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner out of Elko? Okay, that, you know, asked that we please do not consider getting rid of NACO because they are a huge asset and we have a lot bigger voice in Washington when we all stand together with issues in Washington DC. So that's just my two cents I wanted to throw in there.
The, the issue, the way I see it, is we represent Lander County. We don't represent the rest of the state and that's nice and flowery everything that you were told, but when we have issues with the state legislature, they wanna dissolve the sheriff's office position. They wanna take Ron out of the office. They wanna take us out of office because we don't wanna go along. What's so funny?
Are you attacking me because I have a smile on my face?
A smirk.
No, it wasn't a smirk.
We, we need to protect our county from the, from the, from the tyranny that's going on in the state and we're not getting backed up by an organization that's a state organization that we have paid in the last, what, eight years, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? They're not doing a thing. All we get from NACO is Patsy coming back with all the things that, and adventures that she's been on. The only one thing that I can see that NACO helped out with was the Sage Hand and we could have joined that lawsuit ourselves easily.
Oh, Keith, first of all, I'm sorry that you don't appreciate the reports and it isn't, it, it isn't my travels per se, it's the reports that are important. And yes, you have information from NACO all the time and I'm sure you can read those and know what we've done for years on this, but, Art, I'm sorry, this county is not autonomous. We can't just sit here and, and worry about everything that, that just we think we can do locally. We are impacted constantly by the state and the federal government on every single thing they do. And yes, I understand your point with the Second Amendment and I've mentioned it before and I agree. I, I think everything is in jeopardy. Our constitution is in jeopardy in the federal government. I understand that, but if we don't all agree on one area at NACO, they have to remain neutral. All that means is they're not gonna testify one way or another.
All that means is they're mugwumps with their mug on one side and their womp on the other. That's exactly what that means. They stand for what's constitutionally sound. You took an oath. The rest of the people took an oath. You're supposed to support your oath and live up to it.
I understand that and.
Well, then why isn't it being done?
No, the whole point is that these type of things will be decided in the courts. They won't be decided by NACO taking a position when part of their members do not agree with the other part.
You mean to tell me that if the fifteen rural counties say, "We're not gonna follow the governor's tyrannical rule," that that's not a majority of the counties and NACO won't do anything?
NACO does not do it on a majority. They do it if we are all in agreement. That's the way that it goes.
Well, it's not set up.
But on the other hand, Art, I don't know, all other fifteen counties are doing that. I don't know what they're doing. I had asked for some more time and, and you certainly were upset about that because I thought we should see what's going on in some of the other areas too, but, but I can't believe that you're gonna throw out seventy years of what they have done for us and all the things they have helped with. So we do have our government and we're not mandated constantly with, with all these things that, that are unfunded. I can't believe you're gonna throw that away just because of one item. Not that the item isn't important, but NACO isn't against you, you're just upset because they didn't go with you.
Well, the way, the way I see it, you're not with us, you're against us. You're supporting the governor. You're supporting a tyrannical fascist Democrat legislature that's in position right now and they are chopping up the constitution, the federal and the state.
So I would like to make a comment and I think.
So I would like to make a comment, and I think Kathy stated it very well. Um, there, there are issues, and, and Patsy mentioned too. Um, a lot of times, there are issues before the legislature that, I'm not saying this particular one, but it's better to take a neutral stance at the time being to see and follow that bill along, to see what happens, because there are always gonna be changes. So you remain neutral for a while till you reach a point to where you can either support or reject it. As far as NACO's stance with the, uh, Second Amendment, um, I don't necessarily understand all of NACO's involvement in that respect as, as well as, um, you know, majority decisions within the counties, et cetera. But this particular bill, it didn't matter, you could have had the entire nation there opposing this bill, and it still would have passed because of our legislature's political parties and our governor's political party. This, this particular bill, it wouldn't have mattered what anybody said. So we're arguing over something that in a lot of ways is, is a mute point. We're picking one particular item that we're upset about, which it wouldn't have made it, meant a difference whether NACO would have supported it or not.
I find both constitutions very valuable, and I think that that's probably the biggest issue in this country, in this state right now, so.
And I think everybody supports you on that, Art. And you were there, you heard the testimony. They made their minds up before anybody else spoke.
I think all three of us were there at that one. Keith was there, Art was there, I was there. Yes. Um, we were, we were there to, to be one body against it, but then there were several.
And this is not, and I'm not making it, uh, simpli- simplifying it at all, but please don't think I'm doing this. But on other issues within things that we, each, each one of us have had to deal with in our lives, where we're stuck in the middle of something, and, um, you're like, you, like, I'm gonna be Sweden. You know, unfortunately, I'm gonna, I, I can't take a stance on it. And I've had to do that numerous times in my life, and it didn't mean, honestly, and this is a huge issue, and I'm obviously, uh, for the constitution on all levels. But on other things, there, sometimes you're stuck in the middle of something. And I'd honestly, in my heart of hearts, don't believe that just because you don't, that you have to stay neutral, that you're going against them. Because I've had to make decisions in my life, you've made decisions in your life, because you've, Brian has explained in the past on things where I had to have to stay neutral, because I understood both sides of it. Not that I agree with it, I don't agree with it. But I also respect the, the other things that they do, and I, I think that they should hear our voices and say, we are, we're, we're upset that you don't fol- you know, that you don't listen to us. But at some point, sometimes they have to stay neutral in order not to totally destroy an organization on, on, on these points. And I can see where that would happen, where we would all at that point benefit nothing if the organization is destroyed. If it, that crumbles because they take a stance on one side or the other, and everybody gets out of it, then the organization no longer exists. And then, then we've all kind of backdoored ourselves. So, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's my two cents. I'm sorry, you know.
Well said, Kathy. Well, I, I do think that, that county governments continue to, you know, evolve and, and adapt to all of our changing laws and our changing environments and even our changing population. And, and I think we are a hundred percent ahead if we have an organization like NACO, that is certainly doing all the wonderful things that they do. And yes, I, I, I relate to what you're all saying, and I agree. But look at all the other laws. What have we had? Thirteen hundred laws? Uh, fifteen hundred? Well, gee. Um, and we're looking at one that, um, like you said, it wouldn't have made any difference, unfortunately. But the ones that we do testify on, there's some heavy ones coming down. And I'm hoping, at least we have our two cents where, and we've done what we can do. And I hope that a lot of them are not going to pass. But I do know that without NACO beside us and, and one of our, our cooperating agencies, that, um, it would be a sad situation for Lander County. Keith, do you have anything to add?
I, I would like to say, um, our county belongs to multiple associations or agencies. We belong to the NACO Nevada Association of Counties. We belong to NACO, the National Association of Counties. Poole Packs, another one, Western Counties Alliance. Each of these organizations have their pluses and minuses. There's, there's no question about it. Each of these organizations help us out in one way or another, or they don't help us out in one way or another. The, the big thing, um, that I, I, there is a thing I do like about NACO, and it's the BDR. It's the process when they do the bill draft request. There is no way, there is absolutely no way, I could sit down and go through every single BDR that comes across, or comes from the legislature, uh, bureau. So they do have that. They, they, when there's something that affects the county, besides getting it from the state, I get it from NACO. And that, and I have the ability to comment on that on behalf of the county. So they do have their pluses and minuses. That's within the organization. It, they are, the ask, the positive end of it, yes, is that they do provide our lobbyists. That is a cost that we would certainly have to incur. And for instance, this year, our, our, our dues are a total of twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars. I can tell you just from the lands bill, just the initial cost to, to contract with the, uh, the company that I spoke of earlier, which was, uh, uh, Cassidy and Associates for our land bill, that starts at fifteen thousand dollars. And that's just for our lands bill. Now, it's gonna go up. There's gonna be some additional costs that are gonna be involved with them being our lobbyists. But Lander County has a good financial portfolio right now. But in the future, are we still gonna have that kind of money to spend on lobbyists if we need them? Like I said, each organization has its positives and its minuses. So NACO has its pluses and its minuses. Some things they help us out a great deal on. The, the sage grouse was a, was a good example. But I do wanna point out, that was the time when they asked for part of a percentage, a small percentage of our PILT money.
Right.
And I believe Torrey's gone, and, and I don't even, I don't know why we still pay it. I, I.
We're paying it because we are contracting with a consultant to do all of that for us.
But so, but we also, we did, we also contracted with a consult, or a, an, an attorney, a firm. Uh, I don't remember the name detailed out here.
For what?
For the, the sage grouse.
Yeah, uh.
But, but it, but.
What's her name? It's a friend of mine, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, because we haven't replaced Torrey, we have done it with a consultant, so we're continuing all the information that Torrey was sending through the consultant.
All right, and, and I was gonna call Dagny and ask her.
Yes, absolutely.
But I, I just wanna, there's positives and negatives. They've helped us, they helped us out greatly on the sage grouse. It, it was a, by far a positive.
I would.
I was just gonna say, the, the Second Amendment thing is the hottest topic in the country right now, without question.
Yeah, and I, I have to say, that probably maybe got a little bit emotional on the topic, because it's just, I am so strong, Second Amendment.
Absolutely.
And stepping on our constitutional rights, but then, that's the whole reason why I wanted some discussion, so I could maybe have some clarity and really view it as a whole. And it is kind of, it's, uh, I mean, number one, I can see the expense if we had to go out and hire our own lobbyists. And I'm not trying to negate the positives that NACO has done for us, but it was just, man, it's just, I do not like attacks on my Second Amendment.
Well, and, and like net proceeds, the state's constantly trying to take our net proceeds. So, I mean, if those things, if we're gonna be in there fighting for that, those kind of things, we're not gonna be able to afford, um, to fight. I mean, what we're paying now, we could, you know, like I said, quadruple, um, for, if they came in and tried to take our net proceeds, cause they're always after that.
And then, and then the power of being united as well, and that's the other thing I worry about.
I doubt if NACO's gonna take our position on net, net proceeds.
So I would like to make a comment about, this is not so much the, the Nevada NACO, but I do know at the state, or at the federal level of NACO, is Keith mentioned the PILT. And on a federal level, that is a very, very, very big issue that NACO is taking a stand on to fight for our rights, for our state's rights to that PILT money. And, so we don't realize, um, you know, the Nevada NACO is, is, you know, regional level, and there's also the state level, you know, a couple separate different entities in some respects, although they do work together. And I know I've, I've offered before, Kathy's gotten a couple copies of some of the bills that we do discuss at the NACO meetings, um, that they are working, you know, for and against. Is these are bills that will definitely affect the counties drastically. So, so they are really working for our benefits.
And unfortunately, on this emotional one, it's.
Yeah, you mentioned PILT, and, um, I don't know if you all remember, uh, when the PILT check was actually delivered by the Department of Interior, it was our deputy director that came out, David Barnhart, who presented the full state PILT check to NACO, um, as a big advertising gimmick. But interestingly enough, that, that deputy is now appointed. He is the director of the Department of Interior. So he knows NACO, knows it well, and yes, we do lobby a great deal on that one. Cause SRS and PILT are always a heavy one, and they always need input. And of course, our input is, is not overgiven, but like I mentioned before, the National Association will actually do the whole review and give us the whole synopsis. And then they testify to the cabinet members on the federal level for us. So, yes, we're not autonomous, as I said.
And our, our PILT money is right at a million dollars a year. So to lose that, that's a mi- a million dollars a year Lander County alone. Lander County would lose a million dollars a year.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to hear that Senator Gocicchia called you, because I do, I mean, I voted for, uh, Senator Gocicchia, and I, I think he honestly represents, tries to represent our northern counties as best as he can. And I, I, that has a little bit of weight when he says, you know, really consider that carefully, so.
Well, he was adamant about it, and if needed to come and discuss it, he was, you know, he was adamant about, you know, about, please think, you know, very hardly, you know, and before you decide to do something like that. It's a very drastic move, and it's gonna cause you more problems, um, than good.
Yeah, cause I can see how being united as a state definitely sends a message federally. I would, at least I would hope to think, you know.
You know, we have such a wonderful rapport with so many of, of our assembly people and Senate in Nevada. We really do, the ones that have been there for any time at all, know what NACO does, and they'll call NACO and ask for the, uh, uh, what is the fiscal impact if we pass this law? And they wanna know, and that's where all that information, everybody puts it together and gives it to them, so they can hopefully make the right decisions. And I will say, yes, we're, we're getting hit with Clark County because they seem to overpower everything right now. But NACO is also educating them on what counties do, cause they don't know. These are new, new people. And remember, the type of, of people we have up there, they're not full-time legislators. People that, that have other jobs and do everything. They're part-time. They're just citizen, you know, people that are, are in those positions. So they need education and, and information on what all the counties do and how it impacts everyone. And NACO, again, does all our advocacy on that.
If we pay them more, would they educate them more?
No.
No. Oh, wait a minute. No, they're uneducatable.
Okay, so what is your pleasure? Is there any kind of action you need to, uh, take on this one?
No, I think I, I mean, I've said my piece, that I'm definitely not in favor of their neutral stance on the Second Amendment. That's a matter of public record, but I have to say that they have a.
I don't think, actually, any of us are very happy. I think it would be wonderful if we could stand together, but, um, I'm anxious to see what the other counties are gonna do too.
Well, I think, um, that, that'll be interesting, and then with these other two bills, to see, well, you know, odds are they'll pass too. But I think NACO as a resource also will be assisting the counties in fighting those. That that, that is the resource there also, when it comes down to it, that these, these next two bills, um, so you got one forty-three that's passed, two ninety-one, that's in Judiciary Committee, uh, three ninety-seven, three, three ninety-seven, is, that's the other thing that NACO can do, is they can assist in the counties on issues that will be violating.
And the information that I put in for your backup too, addresses all the different bills that, not all the bills, not even a few of the bills, the ones that NACO brought forth, that some of them are key items right now, so. Thank you all. I appreciate the discussion and appreciate the support. Number eight.
Is there any public comment?
Any public comment? Cindy, you're the only one.
You don't wanna hear what I have to say, so we'll just go on.
But you're entitled to say it.
Okay.
Okay, that was Cindy Clark, and no comment. Number eight, discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove the renewal of the consulting agreement between Bobby Thomas, DBA, BT Express, Plan Review Inspection, Construction Consultant, and Lander County, effective from July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, and all the matters properly related thereto.
So this, this is our contract, or, uh, the building department and his contract for plan review. It was, uh, initially approved last year. The state fire marshal no longer does plan review, and, and unless we have a interlocal agreement with, with state fire marshal, which we don't. Um, we've discussed it. We may look at it in the future. But this is just to, uh, renew, uh, Mr. Thomas's contract to do our plans review. We, we have to have it done somewhere. He's in Winnebuck, he's close by, or we could go to Reno, which would obviously be for a little bit. He's been doing it for about a year.
I only had one question on, on it, Ashley, and that was under the payment. And it says that compensation of the consultant is due and payable within ten days following the submission by consultant of the written report to the county. And that makes it very difficult for us sometimes, um, by the time we have a meeting and it's approved and all that. Would he be open to changing that perhaps?
I'm sure he would be. I, I'm sure he would be.
I mean, it's just very difficult for us to meet those types of deadlines with the way accounting is set up with our billing.
So give me an example of how, how they, how they play into, so if we were to build something?
Yes.
And we have this plan review?
Yes.
If we're going to.
Or if we, if, if I decide to build a house, and I have to submit the plans, and they have to be reviewed to make sure that it's up to code?
Yeah, yeah, is that what you're asking, Brian? I, I wanna, I wanna, I can do one at a time.
Well, I'm just saying, like, on a county level, just say if we made some improvement to one of our facilities, do these guys review?
Yes, so they review. Yes, they review it to make sure that, 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 uh, everything's in code and not out of code.
So code and, within code and within ordinance?
Uh, no, no, because we follow the uniform building code.
Uh-huh.
So that is what the county's adopted, is a uniform building code. So everything is followed under, uh.
To be examined by the ordinances of Lander County.
Well, it should, okay.
So, so my question, there's a little bit of stuff happening with the sheriff's department. So would, should these guys have caught?
So there, there are no plans for the sheriff's department.
So again, that's my, that's my point. That's, we pay these guys, so.
To, to review a plan we submitted.
That we submitted, but we didn't submit a plan.
Because this is.
They're not on retained.
Oh, gotcha.
Because this is considered a maintenance contract, there are no actual plans in place.
And does it apply to personal building? Or is it just county?
Like if somebody wanted to build a home?
If I was building something.
No, the, the, well, the homeowner would do that in the event of a, of a, uh, now, they can submit them to us. We could submit them, and then we, they would be built.
Be built back. Okay, so this is just specifically for county?
Well, for commercial type things.
Commercial.
Yes. But like I say, a, a private homeowner can come in and ask for the plan review, or they can do it separately, as long as the plan review person is a, is a, a certified plans reviewer. Oh, there you go.
We're doing very good.
Well, yeah, thanks. I used to do plans. I used to do plan reviews, I know.
Anna Panola, for the record, for the building department. He's been my plan reviewer for two years. My other one passed away, and this is just a renewal of the contract. And it's for everything, residential and commercial. Homes, not little things, but...
Do they all get presented to them, all plans?
Homes and commercial.
All homes and commercial? Construction?
Yep.
The plans are presented to this guy?
So any major construction that happens within our county, it goes to these people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we don't have anybody in staff, that's why.
I'll make a motion...
Most counties, third party, they're plan reviewing too.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the consulting agreement between Bobby Thomas, DBA, BT Express, Plan Review Inspection, Construction Consultant, and Lander County, effective July first, two thousand nineteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, with the questions of changing the payment due date.
Two thirty?
Two thirty, net due thirty, and authorize the chair or county manager to sign.
Okay, I'll second.
Judy made the motion, Kathy seconded. Any other discussion? Public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and now passes. Moving to number nine. Discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove the renewal of the web services agreement between Revise LLC and Lander County, effective from June first, two thousand nineteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and all of the matters properly related thereto.
So this is put forth by the assessor, Laura Truall, and it has to do with our website internet services. And it's just to continue on with our new website and maintenance and...
It looked like from the information that we will actually be able to go on and make all the changes ourselves, right?
That is correct. Laura needs to give you a password, username and a password, and then you can go in and...
But each department now can update everything?
That ability is there, yes, that is correct.
Make a motion that we approve the renewal of the web services agreement between Revise LLC and Lander County, effective June first, two thousand nineteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and authorize the chair to sign.
I'll second.
Motion made by Judy, seconded by Kathy, and has a discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and now passes. And we are at number ten, under correspondence. Correspondence reports potential upcoming agenda items.
We never have dissolved the rodeo club.
Okay, would you like that back on the agenda for discussion?
What's that, Keith?
The rodeo club, the dissolve, dissolving of the board. I can't remember the last time they had a meeting. And I know, clear back to when Neela was here, they, we've tried to contact, and there's just been no correspondence back and forth from their chair or board member.
Who was their chair?
Last I knew, it was Casey Gunther.
Okay.
So we, okay. Just, I'm going to write this down because I do have something else. So in Austin, their rodeo or grounds board has dissolved. So I think we need to put that on there and discuss how you would like to proceed with it as far as the southern rodeo grounds go in Austin.
We do, because we need, where does that come under now, road and bridge? Like if somebody wants to do something, it's...
Well, it was, they had their own board, so everything's...
Well, I know they did, but I'm saying without that.
So right now, yes. It falls to road and bridge, just over in the last two months.
Yes, we need to put that on.
Okay, because there are people interested, or they'd like to use them, but we don't have any, a process in place of how the commission would like to handle the rodeo grounds in the south.
Weren't there people that were staying there for free?
And they were kicked out.
And kicked out, right?
Yes, yep, I went and served them, and they moved their animals. I think, actually, they're not living there, but I think there's, they still have one trailer.
Is that the letter I wrote for?
And that's in the south?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, they were, we had, we had one person that was charging other people for using the rodeo grounds and keeping the money.
So, okay, anything else under number nine?
Where exactly?
I mean, number ten, sorry. Nope?
No, I, where exactly are we on the dog park? Did we finish that ordinance, or did we get halfway through? And I don't know as though it ever got finished.
Look it up.
Yeah.
You said dog park?
I don't think the ordinance ever came before us, did it?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we, we're not done with that.
No.
Yeah, there's the dog park at Lyons Park.
I'll have it up for, on the next meeting.
Well, it just...
With the report and where it's at.
Just trying to clean things up here.
Okay, anything else? We're going to public comment for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agenda item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner. A public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Judy made the motion, Kathy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Goodbye, Austin.
Aye.